Would you please all join me, oh, in the roll call, please, excuse me.
I'll join you in the roll call.
Yes, would you all join me in the roll call?
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Pauli.
Here.
Commissioner Mum. Mayor Neely.
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Legions, please.
I have the Pledge of Legions to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we have a presentation from Greater Oregon City Incorporated from Eric Underwood, our Economic Development Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, when I first began, I presented a work plan to the Commission for Economic Development for the upcoming year. Part of that was getting Oregon City more involved in the regional economic development efforts. And as an effort in that, we have since joined the Regional Economic Development Group, Greater Portland Inc. They have a lot of things on their plate. It's a group that combines at least six counties of economic development practitioners as well as private investors. So it's about a 50-50 split with the board. I attend regular Greater Portland Inc. membership meetings each month, and we talk about the efforts that the region is making for economic development to make the entire region a better place to live, work, and play. So I wanted to kind of highlight our benefits of membership and kind of give the Commission an overview of what the group actually does and what they have planned for the future. So I've invited Maggie Finnerty and Colin Sears of Greater Portland Inc., and they're here tonight to talk with you a little bit more about Greater Portland Inc.
Thank you. Could you introduce yourselves one more time for us?
In case there's any confusion, I'm Maggie Finnerty.
I'm Colin Sears.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening. We spent about 10 or 15 minutes going through what we do at Greater Portland Inc. and how we ultimately benefit your community through our work and some of the work that we're doing.
We'll benefit Oregon City already, we hope. So overall, the presentation title says it all. So what our focus is on is to help companies expand and relocate to Greater Portland and push efforts to promote job creation within the entire Greater Portland region. That includes two counties in Washington State, Skamania, Clark County, but also includes Washington-Maltnuma, Clackamas, Yamhill, and Columbia Counties on the Oregon side of the Columbia River. So we're living in a world where there's new realities. Economic development is a global competition. In fact, if you look at the fastest-growing economies throughout the world the past few years, most of those were outside of Europe and North America. So it's a different time, it's a different place, and we need to be more competitive. Traded sector jobs are the ones that have the higher return on investment, so that's what our work focuses on as we go out to recruit businesses to the region. Metro areas are convening these types of partnerships throughout the U.S., and we're actually very late to the game. This Greater Portland Inc. was formed through a merger of Regional Economic Development Partners and Greenlight Greater Portland about 16 months ago. Our CEO joined last August, 13 months ago. Maggie joined about a year ago. I've been there 10 months. So we're a brand-new team. There are six of us full-time, a couple part-time staff. I'm going to walk you quickly through our work plan, and at the end, if you have questions, actually, both Maggie and I will walk you through this. So our overall work plan is to position the Greater Portland region as a center for high-quality economic growth, focusing in three areas: business development, that's the body of work I manage; marketing and branding, which we have a wonderful person named Maggie Davis who has...
Me, a different Maggie, imagine that.
...who came from HP. She worked there for seven years and for Tektronix for years before that. And she has a great experience at marketing things that are not things we can pick with our hands: places, ideas, concepts, which is what we're doing as we sell our region. And then the third is regional strategy and coordination. So that's coordinating efforts that can make an impact regionally, like the Brookings, the Metropolitan Export Initiative, which will help grow our economy through export jobs; our comprehensive economic development strategy, which allows for us to compete more effectively for infrastructure funds that can be used for job growth and related activities. So business development, so this is my bucket. I'll try to keep it brief, since I can talk for hours on this. But our focus is on retention, expansion, and targeted recruitment of businesses from our four regional clusters. So that's athletic and outdoor apparel gear; high-tech and software; advanced manufacturing and clean technology. And advanced manufacturing is a pretty broad definition. It includes food processing and types of value-added agriculture as well. So I want to make sure you know that. So here's a look at our current pipeline as of today. This is the latest. I just updated this graph with, we have 20 recruitment projects in the pipeline and five retention-expansion projects we're working with regional communities on. If all of these converted to wins, which will never happen, I'd bet my life on it, we'd have 3,000 new jobs recruited and 200 new jobs retained and expanded. But this is the type of activity. So we're working on companies that have four jobs or five jobs, small firms, R&amp;D, manufacturing, to a few projects where they would be, you know, 1,500 jobs and, you know, billions of dollars in investment. So we run the gamut from working on very large, complex projects to small and not-so-complex. But they all take time and effort, and we collaborate with partners throughout the region on this work.
If I could just add one thing, Colin is being very humble, because when he came on board less than a year ago, we had literally zero projects in our pipeline. So he's managed to build this, you know, with the support of the team, but really Colin's taken a huge effort in building the pipeline, and we are at capacity. So hopefully, no more big projects will come our way, because we really are at capacity right now. So go ahead.
Or we win some and then just keep the ball rolling.
Yeah, exactly. We close them.
So this gives you an overview of the types of projects that we're working on right now, and that's, this is where the economy is right now and what we're seeing. So this would be pretty comparable to what cities like Denver and Salt Lake City, Seattle, Austin, Phoenix are seeing right now. It's sort of the mix. We, obviously, we have a few places where we have some, you know what I would say, sort of, software includes technology, so it would include projects like Intel, those types of companies. But this is a pretty, pretty true representation of what we're seeing on the streets as far as activity and inquiries. So I'm just going to focus on a few highlights of some things we're working on right now. On the retention and expansion side, we're working with a small company that would be relocating their headquarters to the region. They do military apparel, so it's a good fit with athletic and outdoor cluster. We worked, and we are still working, on the Catalyst RX project. That's a healthcare software company, and they were brought to us by one of our board members who works for, Mark Gantz, who's the head of Cambia Health here. And so it was a lead he had. He handed that to us, and we worked it, and we're successful in getting that company to commit to creating jobs in our region. Salesforce.com, some of you may have read the press about that. That's a company where the fact that we're working with them leaked out before we wanted it to. That's just the way the media is. Sometimes they latch on to this. So that's a company, they're still looking at the entire region for a site. Obviously, they need a lot of space, because they have 500 employees, but as far as we understand, the entire region's open. And then the last one is Project Impact. This is the type of project at full build-out. It could be up to 2,000 jobs. We're competing with another region somewhere in the southwest U.S. Originally, there were about seven or eight communities throughout North America, and now we're in the top two. So we're glad to hear that, but it's been a lot of work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maggie.
You did that great. So marketing and branding is one of the, one of the things that I think has changed significantly with the new leadership of Greater Portland Inc. after the transition of the merger. Essentially, back, you know, a couple of years ago, the history of Greenlight was really a very good marketing company, and many of you probably have seen the reports that they did. They would put together some beautiful brochures with really important information that they would bring along on trade shows, and they looked great, they were informative, but like anything that's in print, it gets stale after a little while. But I think that they did a great job of doing the research and producing beautiful marketing materials that were helpful. But the way the new team looked at what this company should be doing is, we shouldn't, this is not our point, right? Our point is not to create something that we can hand out and give somebody to take away with them. Our point is to create jobs and to bring people to the region and help our current businesses here expand. And so the real, one of the biggest changes is that marketing and branding went from being sort of the point to a critical supporting role for the work that Colin's doing in the business development work. So now, instead of going out and producing a one-size-fits-all marketing piece about our region, what we do is create very specific marketing pieces to the specific projects that Colin is working. Now, it doesn't mean that we have to keep recreating the wheel. There are ways that we can do this, and Maggie Davis, the other Maggie, I get none of this credit. One of the things that she's created to do this is the Faces of Business marketing campaign. And so, I think you can flip the page there. The Faces of Business campaign is basically telling stories of people that are here, that are in the region already, that are staying in the region, they're getting funding in the region, they're growing in the region, and most people don't know about them. One of the things that we've learned is that people, unfortunately, in the Greater Portland region like to tell the bad stories, but they don't always like to tell the good stories. And we have a tremendous amount of success stories that nobody really knows about, and I'm going to throw one out. Acton Software. Has anybody in here heard of Acton Software? See, that's really sad, but unfortunately, not unusual. Acton Software is one of the most well-known and growing companies in the country. They are, they do, if you're receiving emails from us about our annual summit, which I'll talk about in a minute, it's powered by Acton. So they help you send emails and other marketing campaigns. They let you track it. They let you see who's opened things, who's actually purchased a ticket because they opened my email, things like that. It's a great, great program. It's a great company, and it's receiving national recognition. It's also receiving national funds. Several different groups, funders, VCs out of the Bay Area were trying to get Acton to move down there and said, "Oh, if you want to be anybody, you've got to come down to the Bay Area." And they said, "No, we're staying here." And guess what? They still got plenty of money. They just closed and have been in the paper with, what was the dollar amount? Do you know? I think it was $30 million. It was a lot of money. And there's more that they're expecting down the pipe, and they have more good news coming. Those are the kinds of stories we want to tell. We are very good at saying why we're a great place to live. Everybody knows. When they hear about the Greater Portland region, I don't know anybody other than saying, "Well, I heard it rains a lot." Other than that, people know it's a great place to be. They know you, there's great hiking and skiing, and it's a lifestyle place. What they don't know is the business case. So we're going to, instead of us telling people why it's so great and what a great place it is to do business, the Faces of Business campaign will let our own people, who are already here, who are doing great things, tell their story and explain why they stay here, why they chose to be here to begin with, why they choose to stay here to move forward. And you'll see more of that. We're officially launching the Faces of Business campaign at our annual summit, which is coming up next Thursday, the 27th. So we're also doing, we don't typically do any print media, just because the return on investment is so, it's usually pretty low these days. It's sort of a new age in marketing. The print, gone are the days of getting off a plane and somebody seeing a sign that says, "Oh, come to Denver, because, you know, the big sky welcomes you," or something like that. That doesn't happen really anymore. But each year, Alaska Airlines has a magazine, their in-flight magazine is dedicated once a year towards Oregon and in particular, in the Greater Portland region. And this month, it's October, and so we placed a giant story and article, or advertisement, rather, in the Alaska Airlines magazine, talking about one particular face of business. And we also encouraged a lot of our partners to do the same. So if anybody takes a plane in October on Alaska Airlines, I'd encourage you, in case you don't happen to ever look at the in-flight magazine, please look at it and let us know what you think, because this is a great way for us to market, right? Because we're recruiting people that are down in the Bay Area and up in the Seattle area. There's something called our West Coast Campaign. And so lots of people commute between these areas, so they're our target audience. So we're just kind of trying to drum up promotional materials so that people think, "Oh, yeah, it is a great place to do business." It's not just a great place to live, it's a great place to do business, too. So I want to close really on our economic summit. Our theme is uniting regionally to compete globally. It's next Thursday from 7:30 in the morning till 1:30 in the afternoon, and we're going to talk a lot about, in much more specifics, about the work that we're doing, what our partners are doing, and none of what we do is possible without our partners, including Oregon City. Eric's been a partner of ours for years, and, you know, even in the old iteration, we work with, there's a, there's a list in this packet of who other small cities are. There's, of course, the big cities are in there, too. But we all have to do this together, and that's why our theme is uniting regionally to compete globally. Because if we start, nobody outside of our region gets this picture. If you look at the back of your, the back of the folder, I think you guys have this folder, right? If you look at the back, this is broken down by the different counties. Nobody outside the region cares about that. To them, Hillsborough is Portland. To them, Oregon City is Portland. And it's not a, you know, a slur on any of the places that are outside the urban core or the downtown core. It's just, that's not what people think of, and really, we're just kind of a dot on the map of the United States. And that, it's global now. It's so, so working together is really, really important. And if any of you have not yet signed up, we are almost sold out, so register soon, because we will sell out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done?
Yeah, you can be done.
We should spend two minutes on regional strategy and coordination.
Well, no, no, I didn't. Are we?
No, you can go.
Oh, okay, I'll go very quickly.
We have one more topic to discuss.
So I spoke about regional strategy and coordination. That's our other third bucket. The point, I think Derek, who's not here tonight, where we tag-team these meetings, would like to talk about this. So we were selected, our region, along with Los Angeles, Minneapolis, and the Syracuse region in central New York, were selected as four pilot regions that had the most potential to increase their exports, to double their exports. And so obviously, that says a lot about our economy. You know, we have, we have hard goods that we manufacture here and ship, but we also have services as well that we export to the world. And so the Brookings Institute is working with those four cities, and Derek Olson in our office is coordinating this effort regionally. We're working with companies like TriQuint Semiconductor, Nike, Intel, some of the big PCC Precision Cast Parts, some of the big dogs, but also some of the smaller companies with a lot of potential. So our goal is to take our $21 billion export market and double that to $42 billion in the next five years. So it's a very lofty goal, but we're working with Brookings. We have technical assistance that's being deployed to work with these manufacturers on the ground, as well as other companies, to really have them get savvy, get smart about learning to export or getting better at doing it. These are the four strategies that we're deploying. So it's leveraging the exporters that are already here, that are already doing a great job, catalyze those that aren't doing enough, building the pipeline, and then really branding it and getting out there. So there's initiatives, like we Build Green Cities is an initiative that's been deployed around the green building industry. So it's both the construction as well as the knowledge side. So we're exporting that brand to places like Asia, like China, Korea, Vietnam, and it's been adopted in a very successful way. So those types of efforts, obviously working with the semiconductor industry.
Yeah, and I just want to say that one fact that I had no idea about is for every $1 billion of exports, that equates to approximately 5,400 jobs. So when you're talking about going from $21 billion to $42 billion, you're talking about adding about 110,000 jobs in the next five years. So it is a huge goal, but we're going to go for it.
And that, that impacts companies throughout the region, big and small. And obviously, when you look at supply chain, it's a huge impact. It really, it does trickle down. So with that, thank you very much for having us tonight. If you have any questions?
Yeah, I think we probably do. One thing I kind of noticed was that Washington County wasn't on your list, which pleases me no end. It isn't, isn't that right?
It wasn't on, it wasn't on what list?
Well, they are there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's there.
So maybe I should explain the documents in the folder.
No, it's the statistical metropolitan area.
Is that, are you looking, which list were you talking about? This one?
Well, when we were speaking, I was, I got Skamania, I got Clark, and so I missed Washington.
You just blocked it out.
In the math. You just, yeah, you blocked it out of there.
I mean, one of the challenges we face, of course, is, is getting infrastructure into lands that we would like to see built out. When we were able to develop the infrastructures in what we call our red soils area, up above through an urban new district, we immediately attracted many businesses to it. But some of the areas that we think we can develop need the infrastructure, and I don't imagine you're that much involved in that piece of it, are you?
No. We're, some of us are very familiar. So Sean Robbins, our CEO, and myself, I worked at the Portland Development Commission for 12 years before I came to Greater Portland, so I'm very familiar. We are, we're not a policy body, so we're not, we're not going to advocate on behalf of some type of initiative. But at the same time, we're collecting data and information from businesses throughout the region that could inform policy and push things, hopefully, in a positive direction.
Basically, I think if, you know, we could really leverage the partnership with GPI if we had the space available. And so if we had that and had it ready to go, we could tap into some of these markets that they're tapping into and bring them out here. That's one of the...
We're a more on-the-ground implementation organization. But at the same time, you know, we're, we do have an issue in the region around not even large and mid-sized parcels for being available for business and having a shortage of those. So we understand that, and not having, you know, even the geographic diversity of those parcels, we don't have a lot of diversities. You know, there's a handful of places in the region. For some projects, there's one or two places that projects could go. So in some ways, it's very crippling when we, when we compete with a region like Phoenix or Austin where they have, you know, we might have three, three places, those regions might have 20, you know.
Does any of your traded sectors involve any kind of agricultural trading?
Well, that's what I was saying. So advanced manufacturing would include food processing, value-added agriculture. So, yeah, we have a very broad definition of advanced manufacturing. It would not include nursery products.
And the Export Initiative is looking into which agricultural to include in the export project. I don't, no one's made any decisions yet, but that certainly is on the list. I mean, obviously, the obvious things are beer and wine and now even distilleries, but there's so much agriculture here that that's a consideration, too.
Any other questions? Let's see. I don't think we have any other questions, then. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate the...
Thank you very much. We hope to bring you more good news. We can come back every year if you want, just let us know when to go by.
Thank you, Eric, for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Well, this is a time for citizen comments, where we allow up to three minutes for any, for any topics that are not on our agenda. I don't know that, I do have William Gifford. William, do you want to come up? And of course, apparently, our buzzer is working very well, and so...
I muted it.
Huh?
I muted.
You muted it, okay. It's now muted.
She'd like to mute me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. And I needed to make a couple of comments. As Secretary of the CIC, so I have my CIC hat on, is that last Wednesday, I have some kudos to give, last Wednesday, the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association, one of our newly reactivated neighborhood associations, which unfortunately suffered the loss of one of our co-chairs, God rest his soul, Scott Young passed away, and it was pretty sad. However, the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association, due to some scheduling conflicts, had to move their site, and they met at High Cliff. High Cliff was, was very gracious in allowing us to use the fireplace room for the Neighborhood Association meeting. It was, I thought, extremely generous, and I just want to give some kudos to the High Cliff for allowing the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association to do that. Also, I need to give kudos to John Lewis, our Acting Public Works Director, for putting on another, yet fine, presentation on the water rate study. And I think the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association was very appreciative of that. There were some good comments, some good feedback, and it was very worthwhile, and I very much appreciate city staff coming to the Neighborhood Associations to present that type of information, very important. Also at that meeting, just a little news tidbit, we have a new co-chair, a gentleman by the name of Todd Last, that's his last name, Last, and Todd stepped up to be co-chair. And we also have a secretary treasurer for that association, too. And that's, that's just news, and it's nice to know that. So I think we must have had, what, 14 people there or so, John? What do you think? I'm guessing.
I think so.
Yeah, it was over a dozen people there, and that's okay for, for most neighborhood associations. And keeping my CIC hat on, and I'll also put my chamber hat on top of that, as Chair of the Government Economic Affairs Committee for the Chamber, the Chamber is also wanting to work with the CIC to have a candidate's forum that I hope our Commissioner candidates are aware of, that they will also include our state representative candidates, our candidates for state representative. Right now, that's set for October 7th, or October 2nd in the evening, but the place has not yet been determined, and there'll be more information coming about that soon. But it's, the CIC has done this for the past couple of years, and unfortunately, because we had a hiatus, we took a summer break, the CIC has not had a chance to really participate in that as much. But the Chair and Vice Chair of the CIC are working on trying to get a candidate's forum going for that, so looking forward to that. That's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. I've seen no other speakers. We'll go right ahead into the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to remove from the consent agenda?
No.
During that, we'll proceed into general business and the second reading of Ordinance 12-1006 amending Title 1204 of the Oregon City Municipal Code for pavement cut restoration standards.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 12-1006 and ordinance amending Title 12.04 of the Oregon City Municipal Code.
The second reading, do we have a motion for second reading and final adoption?
One little clarification on the, on the standard language. I just want to point out, because it was pointed out to me today, that there's, on page four, there's a reference to standard drawing numbers that was incorrect in the first go-around. It's been corrected and attached, but everything else is correct, it's just the page numbers are wrong, so I thought I'd mention that.
That doesn't impact the reading?
I am looking...
It's not on the ordinance, is it?
No, no. Oh, you know what? This is on the resolution, which is next.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, we got to...
So the answer is no, you're out there.
Okay, very good. It does look like it's...
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, getting on, off, onto the, on the floor, or I'm trying to. And there. As Rod moved and, do we see the motion or...
It was on there.
Anyway, it was on there, okay. Rocky seconded it. Okay. That, we'll go on to the second reading?
That was...
Well, we, we had the...
Did I go out of order on that one?
Actually, well, he didn't read it.
Yes, yeah, he did. Yes, he did, he did read it at the beginning.
What, was that it?
Yeah.
You still snuck it in there? Okay, very good. Sorry. With that, we'll go on then to Agenda Item...
6B.
Yeah, just a second here. 6B, which is a Resolution 1229 adopting a city of Oregon City Public Works pavement cut standards and standard drawings, which I believe John Lewis wants to make some comments about.
Yeah, sorry about that. I jumped the gun.
6B, which is a Resolution 1229 adopting a City of Oregon City Public Works pavement cut standards and standard drawings, which I believe John Lewis wants to make some comments about.
Yeah, sorry about that, I jumped the gun. So the, one of the attachments is the actual standard, standard language itself, and then on page four of that, there's a paragraph that references the Oregon Standard Drawings 532, 533, and 534, or actually, no, it references 526, 527, 528, and the right answer is 532, 533, 534. So it's really a typo, and we just want to make sure that you knew that.
So it is a resolution, and so the changes wouldn't affect its effectiveness, but when you, if somebody were to move adoption to include those amendments?
Do we have any questions? Kathy Roth making a, making a motion?
I'm making a motion to adopt 12-107, Resolution 1229, adopting City of Oregon City Public Works pavement cut standards and standard drawings with the recommended adoption, or amendments on page four.
I second.
And Carol Polly has seconded. Okay, very good.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. Then on to 6C, 12-108, OPRD Local Government Grant Agreement, Rivercrest, what is it, Rivercrest? I'm sorry. Restroom?
Restroom.
Yeah, so this is Rivercrest Park, I presume?
Yes. I'll, I'll be giving you some information on that. Mayor and Commissioner, this is a grant agreement from the State Parks and Recreation Department for the Rivercrest Park restroom project. We were recently notified that we were successful in our grant application that we put in, in the spring, actually, and then presented during the summer to the, to the board. We have been awarded $150,000 with an equal city match of $150,000 for a total project of $300,000 to basically redo the entire restroom facility at the park. As you know, over the last few years, we've done a number of improvements at Rivercrest Park, the new spray park, the renovation of the tennis courts and the basketball court, and then a new picnic shelter, and that, of course, was just a busy park to begin with, so it's, it's even busier. And the restroom, as, as near as we can tell, is at least 40 years old, maybe more than that, probably goes back to when the original waiting pool was built or sometime after that. So we've been in need of replacing and renovating the restroom for quite some time, this gives us the opportunity to finally do that. It will be, it'll include, obviously, just, you know, the restroom facility, but also some storage space for maintenance and our recreation programs, some, some changing type facilities that will complement our spray park being there, and a number of other improvements. So the, the funding from this, this is the local government grant program, which we've been the recipient of a number of grants from the state over the last several years for projects such as John Storm Park, we actually did some of the spray park and tennis court improvements I was just talking about, and the Kenema Neighborhood Park, which we just recently opened, have been funded, at least in part, by the local government grant program, which is from Measure 66, these are dedicated monies that come from the Oregon Lottery, that go to local communities to use for parks and recreation purposes. So that's a little bit, bit of background about the project and the funding source. And this is, this is simply requesting your approval of the grant agreement with the state to allow us to accept those funds, which I'm sure we would like to do, so. So we would recommend your approval of the, of the grant agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And just to say the matches from the systems development charges?
From the Park Development Fund, which is mostly SDCs, that's correct.
Okay.
So is this a rebuild or a remodel?
Technically, it's a remodel, but it's almost a rebuild. We're going to salvage a little bit, some of the infrastructure that's there, utilities that are already in ground and so forth, but for the most part, the existing building will, will go away.
Because the pump house is in that building, too, isn't it?
Uh, it is, it is, we're going to incorporate some of that, you know, like I say, some of the utilities for both for the restroom as well as for the spray park will be, will be worked around and reincorporated into the, to the renovated building, or the new, it's basically a new building.
Good.
And I should add one more comment that I forgot to mention, just in terms of, to visualize, I think most of you have probably seen the, the new restroom building that was installed at Wesleyland Park this last year. We're basing the design concept on that similar look, so we're going to apply that same, that same type of design. It won't be as big as that building, because that also, the Wesleyland building includes a concession stand, which we, we won't be putting in at Rivercrest, but that same type of, of feel and look, so.
Here are, here are motion to accept the local grant agreement with, for the restroom?
Move to approve Oregon Parks Recreation Department Local Government Grant Agreement, Rivercrest Park Restroom.
Motion is made by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Polly.
It passes four to zero.
All right, now let's get to something controversial like the consent agenda. Motion to accept.
Some of...
Second? All in favor? And since nothing was pulled, very good.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. It's amazing how things smoothly go when Betty Moore isn't here, isn't it?
But then, I guess we're right for the city management.
You just pass it right over to me then.
Yeah, well, I want to remind the commission that the Singer Falls, and also the audience, that the Singer Falls Lighting Event is scheduled for September 26th, which is a Wednesday evening at 8:00 PM, following the last downtown farmer's market. So go to the market, buy our great stuff, and hang around till 8:00 PM, and we'll throw the switch and see, and keep our fingers crossed.
What is the time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, yeah, on the 26th. Also want to remind Commissioners and the community that Mayor Neely and Commissioners Polly, Roth, and myself will be attending the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Salem, September 27th to 29th. And I think Maureen has saved the date for the Carnegie 100th anniversary. You want to hand those out?
Yay.
Okay.
I'll just put this in my Kindle. That's a great picture.
That's cute.
I like it. Very good.
Thank you, Maureen. And then I think Commissioners have heard about Nancy Crushauer used to update us occasionally on the railway project, the light rail, or high-speed rail, rather, which I think the speed has been debated. It was really fast and then not as fast, and now I'm not sure what speed it is, but they're still working on the project. They have a light rail, or a passenger rail forum, and I'm going to ask John Lewis to be our representative on that, on that forum, and to keep the commission updated periodically. However, I want to remind the commission and those that are listening in the audience that there is a website where you can attend, basically, an online open house and provide comments to policymakers on this, and it can be found, it's an ODOT-sponsored website, and the comments must be submitted no later than October 31st, and it's at www.organpassengerrail.org. I spent some time on the website today, and there are already some comments on there from Oregon City residents, so it'd be good to have as much participation as possible in those decisions that are going to be made. And then John will be giving us periodic updates from his attendance at the forum meetings.
There have been also open houses, I think a couple of weeks ago in Oregon City, a subsequent one has been, I wasn't even going to Oregon City. But I requested Mr. Lewis to ask the Traffic Advisor Committee members, any of them that can make that meeting, to go to it. And I guess my understanding is that the, that one option, the electric rail, has been essentially dropped, is that correct? Have you been able to determine that?
I don't believe anything's been dropped. It seemed like they were really on a soul-searching effort to get feedback about a lot of different considerations, one of which, one of which would be the, the type of rail, so I didn't hear that that had been dropped.
Okay.
The, the scope of it is really, it's called an EIS, which is an environmental impact statement that has to be prepared as part of the implementation under the National Environmental Policy Act. What that really means is they have to study all the alternatives. So I think at this point, the more ideas they get, the better, and that's what their, their charge is, is to study all possible alternatives. But Oregon City is definitely one of the alternatives, we're on the route already, we have a station here, so we have a big stake in this, and so as much input as we can get from our community, the better.
To your knowledge, has there been any discussions between, between ODOT and Union Pacific? And one of the things that was, I know is going to be a concern of ODOT, is using freight rail, or any segments of freight rail, but I'm wondering if there's things that could be done jointly with Union Pacific that would benefit us both in the process? I mean, Oregon City is a possible rapid rail.
Sounds like an excellent comment to be placed on that website, where they're asking for input. Seriously, you don't even, I think you don't really even have to give a lot of information about yourself. Just go on there, and I think the comment I saw was from someone named Eric, that could be just about anybody in Oregon City. It was E-R-I-K.
I, I was, I was going to say, I presume that was place of residence and not necessarily place of work, so.
I, I would just encourage every citizen, because our citizens are the ones that know the most about how rail affects their community, and as we all know, rail is a, it's a, well, it's an asset, and it's also a liability. If it's a liability, if you're waiting in line to get across the crossing, but it's an asset if you have a job connected to it in any way, shape, or form. So as much input as you can provide there, please do, and John will be giving us updates periodically as they meet. We're talking about a multi-year process, it's already been underway, I think, three years, so there's more time, but the deadline for comments, again, is October 31st. So moving on, I have, the bad news is we're, we no longer have a Public Works Operations Manager. The good news is I think we have a really terrific choice for our next Public Works Director, John Lewis. John? And we don't have to pay travel expenses, or moving expenses, or any of that. So, John, wag your finger at me anytime and tell me you're a taxpayer. I'm here for you.
Well, I think, first of all, I think it's great, you've been with us for, what, eight years now, is that right?
And so, a lot of experience, a lot of direct experience working on the projects that we've had under former Public Works Director Nancy Crushauer, and my understanding, she gave him strong recommendations, the city's strong recommendation, as opposed to searching for somebody else to actually appoint in-house, and that wouldn't have been done if it wasn't that she, in fact, thought you'd be a top rated Public Works Director. Had a lot of support from lots of places in the community, so it was good to have that as part of my decision. Last but not least, certainly, is Wyatt Parner, our Finance Director. John is my third appointment, so Wyatt is my second appointment, and Wyatt's going to give you a short update on just on what's been happening in the Finance Department. It's sort of his first 100 days, if you will, with the city, and I thought it might be helpful for you to know some of the changes that he's going to be incorporating in the department. There's, anytime you have new eyes on that department that's been managed by the same person for 19 years, you're going to have things that you notice that you might want to do differently, and I think some of those are going to be improvements. And so Wyatt's got a very brief presentation for you about what he's doing in the Finance Department.
Thank you, David, and thank you Mayor Neely and members of the commission. Tomorrow marks my three-month anniversary, and I'm still just pleased as punch to be here. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve you and the community. I just wanted to, David asked me to kind of talk to you about the transition period and what I've seen, and a little bit to get you kind of acquainted with what I've been doing. My first three months have involved engaging with the staff in the Finance Department. The Financial Operations Department, my predecessor's done a great job, so my goal has been to kind of, to engage and to see about how we can take the great work that they've been doing and build upon that to do additional good work. I've spent quite a bit of time developing relationships with stakeholders in the city, various, meeting with all the department heads, various partners that we have with Oregon City, some community leaders, and it's been a real great opportunity to learn about the city, and, and so I can support folks better. As you can imagine, there's been quite a bit of financial research, because we have a rich history, and not only can I spend just days and nights poring over our financial reports and understanding how all that's put together, but also researching the history of some of the charter amendments and things like that that impact our finances. And it's an exciting time to be at Oregon City, lots of special projects I've been involved with, trying to obtain financing for development projects, working with Public Works to provide them with information for the water rate analysis, and a laundry list of other projects. And at the same time, David asked me to, as he said, put, put a fresh look on the Department of Finance and see if there's some areas where we can enhance what we've been doing for the city, and I want to talk to you about those a little bit. First, though, I want to show you, okay, let me give you a quick overview. I broke down the assessment into three focus areas, financial reporting, fiscal operations, and customer service communications. Those are three cornerstones of a healthy finance department when you look at what bond analyzers look at and things like that, so I'll talk about each of those areas. But first, I wanted to show you Department Organization chart. So there's me, the Finance Director, and we are thankfully involved in recruitment right now for the Assistant Finance Director, and I think that was a very wise decision that the Budget Committee and the Commission adopted, because to some extent, my predecessor's done such an excellent job, but there's so much to be done that in, in one regard, you can spend a lot of time with your head in the books, if you will, but I think there's so much more that can be done in terms of communication and, and some improvements that can be made, so I'm really looking forward to having that additional resource. The Finance Department has been broken into an accounting and reporting function, utility customer service function, and municipal court. I've recommended to the city manager that we make two slight changes, no additions of staff, but a little bit of a change in focus of some of the existing staff. So our front reception person, we're going to add a little bit more customer service coordination function. We do an excellent job in our utility billing area, and we could do the same type of work with our receivable system development charges, assessment work, and dealing with customers, getting back to them timely, making sure payments are received, and so the reception position's going to take on some additional responsibilities there. The other customers that we have are our internal department customers, and as I've met with departments, they've made it really clear to me that we could, we could step up our efforts to give them timely financial reporting information to help them with the great work that they do. So what we want to do is take one, the accounting clerk position that recently became vacant due to retirement, and convert that to a senior account technician to be on par with the existing staff in accounting, and then have one of those folks focus on financial analysis or business analysis, and really interface with the other departments, so they have a go-to person. Oregon City's just the perfect size in my mind, but a lot of larger cities have an analyst in each department, so this person would sort of be a go-to analyst across all departments, because we can't afford analysts in every department. And so with that, just jump into the first area of assessment, financial reporting. The Commission set the priority to have a biennial budget, and that's my top priority, and probably you won't see me for the next six months, because I'll be, I will be buried in the books a little bit there. It's quite an undertaking, but I also think it's very much going to be saving us time down the road, because we'll only have to go to the process, through the process, every two years. And also, the city manager's impressed upon me that we want to align the budget process with the goal-setting process that the Commission has, and that'll make everything integrate more effectively. One of the things that I've discovered, kind of looking through the finances, is that we don't have financial forecasts on a long-term basis, or at least we haven't prepared those those real consistently, and, um, I'm really impressed with what the community has done, annexing into the fire district, annexing into a library district, and we have a pretty healthy general fund balance compared to other municipalities. We're not rich, but other municipalities are really struggling, and it's, and I'm thankful that Oregon City isn't facing that. Um, at the same time, your expectation, me, should be to provide you with not only financial information for today, but the impacts of decisions that we make today, what will that be financially into the future? So if we decide to make a, a contribution or get involved with a specific project down the road, would that tap into our resources? I wanna be real clear with that as we go through the budget process. And it makes a lot of sense to incorporate development of those financial forecasts with the biennial budget work that we'll be doing. My predecessor, David Wimmer, submitted for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report National Award, uh, for the fiscal year ended 2011. Um, I think we might get that award. He's done great work, and, um, I certainly wanna continue on with that tradition. It just is a, another testament to the quality of financial reporting, and it also helps with our bond rate. And then I have a space here, because in, the other projects down here are a little bit longer term in nature, but I would like to work with Public Works to develop an annual, well, biennial, actually, capital improvement plan, which will give us more current information on the status of our capital projects, and also, um, really timely information on funding for those projects or what's unfunded, so that the Commission can kind of review and see what our priorities are a little bit more clearly. And finally, under financial reporting, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is a very important document, because it, um, attests to the stewardship that we have for the city's financial resources, and it's audited, but I think most folks will find if they pull that thing open and start to read it, it's not really user-friendly. So, one of the objectives that I'd like for us to have is to develop some type of popular financial reporting, so that we can make that allowable to the citizens, and they can flip through it and have kind of a summary picture of where our finances are without all the technical jargon. Second area I looked at is financial operations, and I wanna say to you, my lists are a lot longer, but I took it under advisement when the City Manager said, "Give me the top six", right, so we'll get everybody out of here on time. Um, but under fiscal operations, I'm looking at areas where we can enhance our revenues or become more efficient in our operations. An area that needs some work is system development charges, assessments, and franchise agreements, um, just documenting the process, and a lot of this came to my attention from talking with various department directors. They wanna know right where we're at on SDCs, and particularly in the areas of deferred SDCs, so we're required by law to be able to, uh, finance when somebody has an SDC, so we wanna make sure that we're following up with them and all the collections are where they need to be. Same thing with accounts receivable, just a really good quality customer service, but making sure people are paying their accounts. Um, there, there's opportunity with our treasury functions, which is basically our banking relationships. We've got, um, we're using three different banks. There's some potential that we can consolidate those relationships and save some money and some time. Note that those three banks are for the different agencies we have, South Fork, uh, the urban renewal and the city, so not, everything's been done well, but you can combine those things as long as you're accounting for them properly and separately. And for longer-term projects, I'd like to, at some point, introduce to the Commission an investment policy, and I believe that there's opportunity for us to pick up additional return on our cash reserves. Currently, we're investing in the local government investment pool, which is the state's pool. There's opportunities to invest with federal agencies and agency securities, and possibly for longer ranges and pick up additional return. I would tell you, the reason I'm not jumping on that right now is because the investment, uh, picture is a little bit different today than it was about five years ago. There's not a huge spread, short-term and long-term investments, as you know, because of the economy, but ultimately, that will change, and an investment policy for a city of our size is something we should have ready to go. Under the area of systems utilization, uh, we just, we just organized a demonstration from our software providers, Eden, to some department directors, and we looked at the budget module and also a project tracking module. Uh, very early, I'd like to work with Public Works in particular on project tracking, because we can gain a lot of efficiencies. We're doing a lot of manual processes and tracking all the great work that Public Works is doing, and there's systems out there that can make that really easy. Um, and a budget module would allow us to be, I guess, respond a lot quicker with budget questions and things like that, too, so look for that down the road. And then I'd also like to eventually look through sections of code, just for financial impacts, and see if there's areas that we need to update. I think all the department directors have done a really good job with that, um, but for example, system development charges, deferrals, are we, um, processing those as effectively as we could? And finally, one of my favorites is customer service and communication. Again, our, the Finance Department's did an excellent job, and all the books are very well in order. Um, as I've talked with folks, I'm hearing a lot that, um, what folks appreciate is more communication, more transparency in the financials, and a, and a personal, um, goal of mine, I think, to address one of, I think, the biggest challenges that cities face today is the future of our operations and doing the critical services that we need to do: water, providing water, sewer, storm, public safety, all these things. And the community needs to know how their dollars are spent to accomplish those goals, so there's a lot of trust exchanged. Um, and the, I'm a big advocate for that. We talked a little bit about the department organization, and making a couple of small adjustments will help with that. I have a goal to develop staff, and I will tell you that the Finance Department's staff is just really excited about their jobs. A lot of them worked here a long time, but they're really passionate, and they, they said to me, Wyatt, "We'd want more responsibility, so can you show us how to do this for the audit and this and that?", and I just, that's a great, great environment to come into. So we're gonna be doing some training and also some cross-training. There's a couple of areas where one person knows how to do this job and nobody else does, and should they win the lottery and leave town? We're gonna have to drop everything and figure it out, so we're gonna be doing some cross-training. And then again, emphasis on communication. Um, a little bit longer-term approach, I've been talking with the City Manager. Uh, we'd like to get a little bit, beef up our public relations media usage, so the, the department's webs, webpage could be updated more routinely with better financial information. There's opportunities to put articles in Trail News. Hopefully you'll read them if I can write financial information to be fun, and, uh, I'll give it a shot. And then also, we have a great partnership with Lamont Falls Media Center, and, um, they, they offer, they teased me and said, "We could do Finance Friday, and you could present information on finances." But I think realistically, they know that they would lose viewership, but in any sense, it would be great, it would be great for us to, you, work with them and, and get at all the information that our citizens deserve on our finances. And with that, I thank you for your time, and happy entertaining any questions.
Thank you. Congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you very much.
I have Karabaly with a question, and I know there will be some others, too.
Kind of just a comment. I think this is great. I think it's great to have fresh eyes looking at it, see what needs updated, um, to especially go over, you know, different franchise agreements and SDCs and make sure that everything is where it should be in updating the systems and then the public outreach. I think this is great. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Polly.
You mentioned in your presentation, I, I'm next on the list, you mentioned in your presentation, investments. Now, what is the city able to invest in? I'm sure there are restrictions and limits in terms of what kinds of investments they can make.
That's an excellent question, and so the city's able to invest, there are restrictions, because one of the main goals is to preserve capital. Risk is a big factor in investing essentially the public's funds, so we need to be really careful with how we invest those funds. Usually, you can gain returns on, uh, try not to be too technical, but going out on the investment curve, so if we invest, currently, we're investing the local government investment pool, which is a state pool, and a lot of the local governments put their money in there. They're actually earning quite a good return. They're in one of the top in the nation, and they're able to do that by investing in some high, very high-grade corporates, okay? We'd probably be a little bit more conservative than that, 'cause they're on a very short-term range, but to kind of boil it down, we can, we would put into place an investment policy that the Commission would approve, which puts parameters around what you can invest, so that you can trust that your Finance Director's not investing in anything risky, okay? And typically, that's gonna be very high corporate grades, triple-A, maybe double-A, uh, investing in the federal government itself, investing in federal agency securities like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, um, securities that have the backing of the federal government. So they're the highest quality investments that you can make. And the idea would be to just leverage those investments with the local government investment pool, so we get the highest return while ensuring that the public's funds are safe.
Um, another question I had was, um, and I don't expect an answer at this point, but, um, to perhaps learn about, uh, the health of our purse funds. I mean, that's always an issue that, uh, our agencies are facing, and perhaps at one point, you could, uh, take some time to talk to us about that.
Be happy to, Mayor.
The other thing you might want to mention is the contractual arrangement we have with South Fork, uh, because that isn't listed in, in your breakout, because of course, that's not, that's not part of the city, but, uh, just to let the public know, you're, that you're the budget director.
Also, the Finance Director for South Fork Water Board, and John Collins is the, the equivalent of the City Manager there, is the Operations Director.
Right. And there are various, like, for example, I think West Lynn has, has brought on the services of the Budget Director of Milwaukee, uh, so this is, this is not unusual, when you have one entity that feels that it, it doesn't need a full-time Budget Director or can be served in another way, but, and South Fork, of course, is our water provider and sold by West Lynn and Oregon City, but it's not directly under Oregon City. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, one last thing I have in my reports tonight, is the Commission, I know, is familiar with our Friday highlights that we transmit to you each week, and, um, because we have two contested seats here, and we wanna try to make, do our best to make sure all the candidates have equal access to equal amounts of information, we're gonna include the other candidates on the Friday highlights until, throughout the duration of the election. And, uh, so when you're getting those, just know that your opponent has the same information, and it's all out there. So, I think that's all we have for our reports tonight.
I have a few things to talk about. The Main Street celebration or, uh...
Car shop?
Pardon?
The car shop?
No, no, actually, that wasn't it. The, uh, the celebration of the completion of the Main Street project, uh, was brought up, I believe, uh, Mr., uh, I was gonna say, Mr. Edgar, I'm sorry. Uh, what happened to me? Mr. Gifford, thank you very much. Uh, and, um, I wanted to mention, of course, it's been a great project. I had a question, uh, I had a question of, uh, Greg Walgren, who is the project manager...
Eric.
Eric Walgren, who's the, uh, Project Manager down there, because some of you may have noticed it, and if you go down railroad, you'll notice the, the seal doesn't go all the way to the curb, and, uh, I asked him about that, and then he asked somebody else about that, and there is actually a reason for it, and the area right along the curb is a parking area, and it is mostly concrete-based, and apparently, a slurry seal won't hold on that, and that's why you don't see that, uh, that seriously, uh, seal all the way across Railroad Avenue. It's something that bothered me, but, uh, it doesn't bother me anymore. But I wanted to tail into that, because we had a, uh, people involved, the National Policy Advisor Committee had a, uh, opportunity to go on tour of another Main Street project, and that was at St. John's, and they have a Main Street project along Lombard. And, uh, they've had some reinvestment going into there, too. If you ever have a chance to go there to the, uh, I forget the street that ties into St. John's Bridge, is that, Phil-, no, Philadelphia? No, that's not right. Anyway, uh, it's, the, the Main Street is, is on the north, basically, the Main Street project's primarily on the north side there through that area, and they have similar issues that we do. They got that bridge that comes in, which is the St. John Bridge. They've got a lot of truck traffic that comes in because of that, because the Port Authority has a lot of operations on the other side of the river. Uh, and, uh, they've, uh, they've got their equivalent of an urban renewal agency that is helping with storefront grants and so forth, but it's very impressive, so I just wanted to let you know there were other areas, too, that had some good Main Street programs going, and you ever have a chance to go down to St. John's there, uh, I think it's worth making the trip. The other thing is that the, uh, League of Oregon Cities is, uh, going around to various areas, regions in the, in the state, talking about what their major legislative agenda is in terms of legislation they wanna push is, and they have their meeting this morning in West Lynn. Uh, they had five items, most of which were items that we also thought were very important. I just wanted to, uh, go through, uh, four of those. Uh, one was called a local control piece, but we, I think most of us know that we've got a ten-dollar cap per, per thousand in terms of taxes that can be applied to the given districts that are served within the city. So a certain amount goes to the counties, some to the fire district, uh, one, some to, uh, to our city and so forth, and that total amount cannot exceed ten dollars per thousand. Uh, if, as compression moves in, uh, the first things that get affected are local option levies. We have two of them in the county that we pay into. One is vector control, and the other one is the sheriff's levy. If compression occurs, that is, our value, the value of the housing goes down to the point that, uh, the revenue starts to drop off, because the, the housing goes off, then that, the, the amount of money that's available starts to, the ten, the ten-dollar cap starts to effectively drop, and they're putting a measure in to exempt from that local option levy. So it does apply to new districts. New districts will still fall under that cap. The local option levies, if the voters vote that they want an additional service, uh, should have the ability to have that service without the possibility of it completely disappearing on them. The other thing they're pressing is, um, the, the property taxes are fixed at three percent, uh, from, from the time that, is it measure fifty? I get five and fifty confused.
So I believe it's fifty.
Five was the first, was it?
Five was first.
So it is fifty.
Yeah.
I think, uh, five, five established the rate, we had established a permanent rate, and I think it was...
Right, and then fifty was...
And then fifty was, uh, property, and it could only increase by no more than three percent a year. Now, the problem with that is that, let's say you have a $200,000 house, and you wanna sell it, and you were there at the very beginning, and somebody's built a $200,000 house, they both sell for $200,000. The new house is gonna be taxed at a higher tax rate than the one that's already been there, even though they have the same value. The one's still going up three percent.
Right, and not, even picking, not at a higher tax rate. The rate is the same, but the assessed value of when the rate is applied is higher.
Yeah, that's right. So they're paying a higher tax because of the assessed value, only going up by three percent. The other thing they're pushing for is a, a reset at resale, that is, when the house is sold, it puts it on, on the par of anything of equal value that's been built. They're also pushing a bill that would allow loans, and it would be a lottery-supported function, that, uh, allows loans for infrastructural development in industrial areas and brownfields and so forth. They'd be in the form of loans that would be state-funded, it'd be competitive to entities that wanted to use them. Uh, the repayment on these loans only occurs when the development, uh, is completed, or the development occurs on the property, so that if, in fact, you've invested in the infrastructure and you don't have any development for two or three years, you have the interest accruing, but you don't have to pay that loan back, and that's another, like, piece of legislation that they're pushing for. Another one is, uh, the funds that they use for nine-eleven services. Uh, those, uh, those funds, in fact, are based on your phone usage. They do not apply, however, to cellulars, they're only online services. And so revenue in that area is going down, and, uh, they want to have a mechanism to apply it to, uh, to, uh, services, uh, like, like, you know, uh, cellular services or prepaid services, which are also not covered in, uh, in the, in the current legislation. Also, the nine-eleven fund that the state collects somehow has the ability to be raided by the state. They can use it for other purposes, apparently, or have done so, so they want the law to be changed, so that doesn't happen. The problem with the existing revenues coming down on nine-eleven is, we, we, we pay ourselves monies for the nine-eleven services above that, that the state, uh, uses, and so if that decreases, that means we are going to be paying, uh- that means we are going to be paying, and the county somehow or another is going to be paying for those services. So those are the items that came forward that they're going to be pressing for. So if you've got any questions on that, please contact the League of Oregon Cities, because I probably won't be able to answer. With that, that's the end of my report. This is, and let's see who we have here. Does anybody else wish to speak?
You have a couple.
One more, right?
Do you have anything else?
Oh, I've got a couple more to make. Yeah, that's true. Excuse me. I wanted to talk about vacancies on advisory boards and commissions. We have one current opening, one vacancy that we'd like to fill before the end of the year, and it is, it's a vacancy of a term that goes until December 31st, 2013, and anybody that's interested in the Planning Commission, I would encourage you to apply for that opening. We have several, we have several seats then that end at the, that terminate at the end of the year, and our policy is that even if somebody else wants to reapply for their position, it's still competitive, so anybody can apply for those positions. So we have, we'll have three new openings at the end of the year for the Budget Committee, one for the Oregon City Improvement Trust, one for the Library Board, one for the Metro Enhancement Committee, one for the Natural Resource Committee, three for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, one for the Planning Commission, and three for the Transportation Advisory Committee, and one for the Urban Renewal Commission. We have, we have one vacancy that we needed to fill on the Natural Resource Committee, and I've appointed Shaw Spady to take that particular position. And with that, I guess, I'm finished. Now, does anybody else have anything they want to comment on?
I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask, and I think it's Scott that I want to ask that. I've noticed a, a big movement, I think, in Waterboard Park within the last month. I haven't been up there for a month, and see, you know, on the, you know where the road kind of is torn up, up in the upper part? Down from that, it seems like there's this big something that's happened recently, so I don't know if anybody's been there and looked at that, but...
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. And the other one was, I'm not sure if it's you or you, but the elevator lighting, where are we on that?
You mean the illumination project, the grant that was awarded? We've, we've committed to accepting the funding, so, and that's a Lloyd project for the most part, but I understand we're moving forward with plans to resurface the elevator, paint the elevator, if you will, get it prepped for the lighting, but it's been a while since I got an update, so that's about all I, you know.
We've been flashing pictures of city employees and commissioners up there.
Say your preference. Say your preference. I don't know the concepts. I know that there was a fair amount of timeline there to solicit proposals from the artist community, and I'd have to talk to Lloyd and Eric Walgren about that if we need to give you an update next, next meeting we can, yeah.
We have the League of Oregon City coming up, incidentally, and I'll be, I'll be the voting delegate there, but if any of you are interested in serving as an alternate, should I not be able to be there, please let me know, and so I can vote an alternate.
Any chance we can learn that this evening?
Yeah, I can do it.
You can do it? Okay.
I won't be there Thursday, but I'll be there.
Okay, I won't be there Thursday either. Is that when the elected, that's not when the voting, because that's kind of a reception time, so that won't be an issue. But we'll have to check on it because I have to leave there for, for part of the time on Saturday, so I can't be there full-time. So if you want to go down, are you planning to go down in any case? That's fine. So then Commissioner Roth will be our alternate in terms of any voting. Any other business? Hearing none? We're closed.